Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being a part of our council meeting tonight. Call the meeting to order, or if you please call the roll.
Brian Pancurt.
Here.
Mike Ryan Shaki.
Here.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Erin Barosky.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Groddick.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? My Pledge of Allegiance is to the one I, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we'll turn it over to Councilman Sue Groddick for tonight's opening.
Thank you. Brooklyn is the proud home of three schools, Heritage Christian, St. Thomas School, and Brooklyn Public Schools. I would like to just have a moment of silence for our seniors who are graduating, the class of 2022. It's been a rough high school year, three years for them during this pandemic. So just a moment of silence to wish them well, to wish them success, and a safe, better year for them next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Groddick. At this time, we'll turn it over to the mayor. We have a guest here from the Brooklyn branch of the Cairo County Library. So Mayor, can I introduce her?
Well, thank you. I thank Andy Selhertz for inviting Kathleen Sullivan. She is going to give us an update on the internal survey that the county library has done as far as the new building. And I know I mentioned in committee as a whole that we did internal survey, and we got those results. And I sent them over to Haley Rich, which is Tracy Sobel's assistant, and they're reviewing that. So this is an addition. So I know Kathleen and Andy said that you had a lot of good information, so.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity tonight to come and update you on some of the things that are happening at the Brooklyn branch, one of them being the survey. I do want to update you on that, but also some other things that have been happening at our branch. I have some copies of our brand-new Friends of the Library newsletter that just came out. It doesn't came to the library today, so I thought I'd bring you some of those. Thank you. So first, I want to say we are so happy to partner with the city of Brooklyn to provide a special Easter-themed Story Walk for the Easter Egg Hunt on Saturday, April 9th. You'll see a picture on the front of the newsletter that I just handed you that shows the storyboard. It was Denise Fleming's Five Little Ducks, and we had little ducks at each of the storyboards as the kids went around that they could take home with them. And those were courtesy of the Friends of the Library as well. So thank you to the Friends for providing those. And even though it was a very cold and rainy day that day on Easter, we had quite a few brave families that decided, I think the kids were just determined. They wanted to do the whole story, and they were getting wetter and wetter as they were going around. But they knew that a good story was worth the effort. So thank you again for letting us participate in that. We really enjoyed it. As the mayor said, our planning process for the new Brooklyn branch has now officially begun. I hope that many people here were able to participate in the community survey that ran for three weeks. It started in late April and went through May 13th. We received over 250 responses, which our architects were really happy with. And they'll use that information as they begin designing the new branch. Really, it's hard to summarize, but there was really interest in everything. You know, we asked people what kinds of amenities they would like to see in the new library. They really wanted, it sort of ran the gamut. Everybody wanted a quiet space and lots of books and cozy places to read. And then many, many people also wanted to see, you know, great technology, maker space, things like Digital Creation Center, high-speed copiers. So I think people are starting to get excited about what we'll be able to offer in the new branch. And with a 25,000-square-foot building, we should be able to offer pretty much everything that people are looking for. So there will be other opportunities to participate in other kinds of ways to give feedback for the community. I don't know exactly what those are going to be yet. Our architects are working on those, but please stay tuned because there will be other opportunities. Brooklyn staff have also been getting ready for our summer reading program. We're planning a fun kickoff event on June 4th from 11:00 to 3:00. We're going to have music, games, activities, refreshments, and prizes. Staff have come up with some fun programs that tie in with our 100th anniversary theme. So we're going to have, for instance, an opportunity for people to come and pick up materials with which they can make their own collage of 100 things. And then once everybody has made their collages, we'll display them all in the library. Our brand-new children's librarian, Alex Ward, led our spring 2022 session of Baby Club recently. And we had 10 families with 24 people in those families in total who learned how to support their children's development by reading, singing, talking, and playing. So it's a series that goes over six weeks, and the families come in every week. And they have, the kids all have an opportunity to play with developmental toys, while the parents learn different things about their child's development. And they have a chance to ask questions, and then they form a really strong bond with one another. So that's always a wonderful program, and we're so happy to be able to bring it back and get it going again after the pandemic. We also recently had our Free Comic Book Day, which a lot of you will remember. That's been going on at the Brooklyn branch for a long time. It's a tie-in event that is shared at local comic book stores throughout the country to share the love of reading on May 7th. And our event brought in approximately 200 customers to the branch to pick up their free comic books, which are provided by Carolyn John's Comic Book Shop in Rocky River. We also had two Star Wars troopers, stormtroopers, in the building, and they posed for pictures with customers. And then we also had four students from Brooklyn Middle School who were there just doing sketches for the kids of the Star Wars characters. And the kids were lining up, the little kids were lining up to get their sketches from the middle school students. So it was a lot of fun. Everybody had a great time. We also had launched something brand-new this year. Our head of adult, Gabriel Venditti, held a series of virtual interviews with filmmakers in partnership with the Cleveland International Film Festival. So as many of you know, we have author events that are done virtually where people interview authors. And he thought, why not do the same thing with some of our filmmakers that are participating in that event? So that was another thing that we're very proud of, that our Brooklyn branch got going. Two of our brand-new staff have just started offering programs. And two of the ones we had recently were de-stress with meditation and homemade spa products. And so, again, it's just nice for us to see that we're starting to offer in-person programming again. People are starting to come out, and things are opening up after the pandemic. And finally, we had our most recent food distribution on May 9th. We had fresh watermelons, apples, green beans, bananas, and bread this time, as well as we also distribute boxes of shelf-stable items, all from the Cleveland Food Bank. We had 97 cars come through, serving a total of 203 households. And we're really happy we can offer that. We purposely scheduled it so that it would be two weeks out from the St. Elias distribution so that we're not conflicting with them at all, and that people who need the food can come now every two weeks. They have one event or another that they can come to. So that is all I have for you tonight. Does anybody have any questions or?
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you again.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Selhertz, for inviting her as well. At this time, we do have a proclamation. So once again, I will turn it over to Mayor to do that.
So tonight, we have a proclamation celebrating Memphis Kitty Park. So if Russell, if you wouldn't mind coming up, as well as Mike, you might have read in the paper the other day, they had a great highlight about Memphis Kitty Park. Thank you for coming. So Kitty Park is celebrating their 70th year. They opened on May 28, 1952. And they were open and created by Stuart Whitner, Stuart and Lady's son Russell, and his wife Ellie, along with longtime general manager Mike Kissel, have continued to operate the park with the same family-oriented values which it began. Memphis Kitty Park, a treasure landmark, and the oldest kitty land in the United States, recognized as having the oldest continuous-operating kitty steel roller coaster in North America. Kitty Park continues to be such a great part of this community. They're a part of our chamber. They donate to several city events, and they're just great to work with. And they're a great neighbor, and they employ so many people in this community and the region. So I want to celebrate with them 70 years. I actually looked at old documents when Mayor Coin announced Kitty Land was coming to Brooklyn in the records in 1952. So it was just neat seeing it. We welcome, we just thank you for everything you do for our community, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to say something?
Well, I can honestly say that if it was up to me to rebuild Kitty Park from scratch, I wouldn't pick any place other than Brooklyn. It's been a phenomenal community to do business in, and I think the mayor's doing a phenomenal job as well. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
If you say you live in Brooklyn, Ohio, what do people say? They say, oh, that's where Kitty Park is from. So you're the one. They definitely hold you some path. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations. That's awesome. At this time, we will have the public session. If anyone in the audience is any safe and good and well for the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember that per council rules, participants must address the council when speaking. No public session participant will be allowed to engage in debate with any member of council, the administration, or any other member of the audience. The council president may not recognize any member of the public who attempts to speak from any location other than the podium. Additionally, public session participants shall observe the same rules of decorum and good conduct applicable to the members of council. Speakers must be courteous in their language and avoid personalities. Anyone making personal attacks, profane or slantish remarks, or become disruptive or combative while addressing city council or while attending a public meeting shall be vermined and/or removed from the meeting by the council president. There is a five-minute time limit, and that will be enforced.
My name is Don McMahon, 9515 Memphis. I want to bring it to the councils. This is on Brook Park, right here. This is on Brook Park. Been there for a while. Nobody cares, okay? I was cited in the city of Brooklyn, every one of yous know what I'm talking about, for a gravel parking lot that you'd need a drone to see. Skyworks has a gravel parking lot, but those are not people that she's out to get. I'm not saying nothing mean. I'm just trying to, this I brought so you wouldn't think I was lying. This is proof. This is today. That's Brook Park Road. You can see it every day of the week. My place, you'd need a drone to see it. But selective enforcement shouldn't be allowed in this city. You told me you was going to destroy me? Now I'm letting you. There's a guy that's working at this, at the city named Peedy. It's so disruptive to see, I got the public records request from Mr. Butler, what he said about black people.
Please avoid personalities here. We're not going to get into the race thing again.
Okay. Well, I mean, I did a public records request. The man talked very bad about a black young juvenile. She gave him his job back as soon as she made mayor. You can't do this. I senior, you spoke about diversity at Cleveland State. You're losing the battle. I asked for the public records request, how many black people we have working in the city? Policemen, African-Americans? How about the service? Fire? None. None. I haven't got it back yet, but I'll answer for you. But you come after me? I'm not, I'm just, I'm telling you. You and Don Neil orchestrated me.
Sir, do not bring up people's names, please. Please avoid personalities.
You and the bulldog. How's that? It's just, I like a bulldog. I wanted to stay because I'm not done. I'm not done. You stopped me the last time we was talking. I got five minutes here, and you're going to hear what I got to say.
As long as you avoid personalities, we'll be just fine, sir.
Am I both personalities? Get one yourself. I got a man of color that owns a business, okay? And he's been drug through the mill with me by this administration. I don't think any of yous know my real story. I had a, I got a business associate. They told me to get more parking. I spent $30,000 to buy the man a parking lot behind his building. You can't see it with a drone. You need a drone. I've been cited for it because it's got gravel parking lot. There's 60 parking lots in this city with gravel. I'm the only one that's ever went to court, to your kangaroo court in Parma. You changed, you changed the complaint so I couldn't get a jury of my peers to hear it. And people who donated to your campaign were my judges. So how is that fair? I was ready. I was ready to go to trial with you and beat you. And now it's an appeals court. I'll never plead to it. When I beat it in appeals, then we have the problem. Then we're going to get to the head of this. This is disgusting. This is disturbing. You people let this go, but you're going to cite me for a parking lot you can't see? Shame on you, all of you. Like I told you before, I'm not afraid of you. I think you see that by now. I really am enjoying this. I thought I was getting that proclamation, to tell you the truth. I was excited. I go, I'm going to get a proclamation. You turned on me.
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Hocke Avenue. It was brought up last time regarding the police and the fire department, pay scales. Are we, if we are really that low compared to other cities and we are losing people, should be readdressed, and maybe we should up the ante? Because everybody, every station you hear about is they're stealing people from each other. And the other thing, someone said about the union last time came up, like the firemen were doing something wrong with the union, the way they spoke. But it was nice to hear the chief say that the firemen stepped up to do the electrical changeover that was not really a hard, hard thing to do. So it was very good to hear them doing that, stepping up. Another thing I've mentioned before, all the money spent on bike lanes for bicyclists. Have they start selling, start charging these bicyclists? Give them license plates. A whole lot of money's going into this that could be into the other stuff. And we have all these decorative center things going down the center. And God help you in the right time, if you need an ambulance and it's rush hour, ambulance will be blowing over the center or something. And something else I just made aware of, my friends watch less, more of the news than I do. They heard that regarding the baby formula shortage, I can't swear to this, but they're usually pretty good with their facts.
Please don't close the door.
If you go to Amazon, and you lock onto Amazon in Canada, you can get Amazon to deliver baby formula right to your house and all in the United States. And the same thing, then another woman, I guess, was speaking. She goes, I believe she was in Mexico, excuse me, California. Went over to Mexico, and there's a ton of, yes, baby food from the United States on the shelves. She bought a carload back to help out friends and things. And something else is going on sideways with our government. Maybe a law years ago, I don't know exactly what it is, but now they're trying to add to it where the World Health Organization will be able to say what the United States will or will not do regarding, you know, health issues and different things, gun, guns, gun control. So I sure hope their government steps up and starts helping us before we turn into a, I don't know. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Woody, 4164 Sprint Crest Drive. I've been following many of the topics and discussions related to issues and concerns within our city among the residents and council for a while now. I'd like to address statements and comments regarding the current concerns regarding the siren that has not worked for quite some time now, in specific, those made by Councilman Groddick. Ms. Groddick, you stated that you did not feel that it was worth the expense to repair the sirens and gave example that you personally received notifications on your smartphone, your television, your tablet, your Alexa, which also requires a monthly expense of an Amazon Prime membership and Ready Notify, all of which you said gave you a feeling of safety and provided more than enough detail and information of any danger or concerns in the event of a serious weather event. While it is impressive that you own all of this modern technology, I would ask, what if the power was out and there was no electricity or no Wi-Fi or no internet service, or your phone wasn't fully charged? And even if the power was still on, wouldn't the sound of the siren at least alert you to turn on your TV or look through your phone? Or better yet, reach out to your neighbor to see if they perhaps have all the necessary information to remain safe? If they don't have the privilege of owning all of the latest technologies such as yourself? Or simply to see if they needed help to prepare for what might lie ahead? Or even better yet, to alert the younger children who may be riding their bikes or at a friend's house playing? Additionally, I do find it somewhat disturbing that based on Brooklyn's current demographics, you would assume that all residents are in a financial position to not only purchase but maintain what some may consider luxury items such as Alexa and, as simple as it may sound, a smartphone. I'm not sure if you're totally in tune with our elderly population who are on a fixed income or others that may struggle, struggle at or below the poverty level. Tablets, computers, Alexa, Amazon memberships, and sometimes even the internet and smartphones may be out of reach for many of our seniors and other residents living near or under the poverty lines. It might surprise you to know that quite a few people, especially seniors, still have flip phones. That means no Facebook, no Google, no apps such as weather or meteorology. I also watched the video symposium held by Levin College at Cleveland State University with Mayor Gallagher on the importance of collaboration and innovation in the public sector. On more than one occasion, Mayor Gallagher stated that Brooklyn not only has more than, more older than younger residents in addition to higher growth in senior population, but the need to ensure that they are taken care of should be a priority. Part of the statement made by Mayor Gallagher was also that ranches and bungalows make up the majority of homes that we have in Brooklyn, which seniors own, and we have to embrace what we are. Albeit these statements were related to the recent Aging and Place Grant, if we truly are concerned about our seniors' well-being, then I believe that the need to keep the siren in good working condition is also a part of embracing who we are. I would like to personally suggest maybe more than just a community event should be offered, such as a door-to-door campaign, a postcard mail or notification, or a special table at the senior center that could be set up in order to help seniors and all other residents with the opportunity to register for some type of alert system and other safety precautions and practices should council and our safety committee decide to implement a process going forward in addition to repairing the siren. In closing, I would like to see ongoing conversations as it relates to the siren. And I'm disappointed that there has been no action items or suggestions to improve the notification methods to the residents and their safety, especially when almost 90% of the residents are not registered to receive any type of notification, which may include a large, the large number of seniors within our community. I would also welcome the opportunity to volunteer to help with this process as someone who will also be turning 60 this year and be considered a senior and has lived in Brooklyn for over 38 years and truly does care about the overall safety and well-being of our residents. Thank you for your consideration.
Rob Slattery, 6600 Bucyrus. After a story ran on Fox 8 about the emergency siren, I was contacted by a man by the name of Dan Bodett. As luck would have it, Mr. Bodett was involved with the original installation of the sirens. He saw the story, and he said he could fix the problem. I called, he emailed me, and I called him, and he stated that for a service fee of $500 or less, he could come out, assess the problem with both sirens, and as long as those sirens were not gutted, he could repair them for a few thousand dollars. His words. His company installs and repairs sirens all over the United States. He said that unless the housing sirens have been gutted, he's confident the problem would only take a few thousand dollars. Mr. Bodett's company offers yearly inspection program for $500 per siren. They check each year. They come out, they'll check the batteries. The batteries last roughly four years, and then they need to be replaced. The batteries are $500 per siren. Mr. Bodett's company doesn't even advertise because they're so busy across the United States in selling these sirens. For example, Lucas County, which is the Toledo area, they have 136 sirens. And that, that's a third of the population of Cairo County and half the area of Cairo County. Mr. Bodett stated that if the city was to buy brand-new sirens, they would be no more than $50,000. So he argued the quote that was reported by the city. Because I told him that the number went from 35 to 50. This is coming from a person who sells sirens, and he's telling you that you most likely do not need them. Please spend the $500 to have this company come out and look at these sirens. If the city doesn't have the money, I'll collect the money. There's more than enough people willing to throw in for that. I believe we may need both the siren and Ready Notify. Would every one of you guys support this if it was only a couple thousand dollars instead of the $50,000 that's been reported? I'm asking tonight, each council person individually to answer this question during your reports. Most of the times, questions are asked, and only a couple of you answer the questions. Have you seen these quotes that have been stated by the police chief, by the mayor, and several council people? Have you seen the quotes? Not heard about them, have been advised? I submitted a public records request to the city asking for the quotes. I got an email back from Mr. Butler that says, Mr. Slattery, we're unable to locate any records responsive to this request. This was last week. Those sirens and those quotes have been talked about in several meetings here, like they were in hand and ready to go. So this illuminates a bigger problem. Someone's lying. Someone's stating something and being advised. Someone's lying in this administration. It can't be any other way. How are you stating you have quotes? And the law director, I've dealt with him on numerous, countless occasions. I probably talk to him more through email than I've ever talked to anybody. And I believe him to be telling the truth. So somebody's lying because he's telling me there's no quotes. So that is a bigger problem than even the siren. Somebody lying in this administration is going to affect everybody on a daily basis, more than even the siren would. Ms. Shaki, have you, have you set a date for the emergency meeting?
There's no back and forth. You can feel free to answer the question.
Okay. Well, that's going to, I got a couple more questions I may not have to ask, depending on her answer. It's a simple question.
There's no back and forth. I read the rules at the beginning of the public session.
Okay. Are you aware that we have two more firefighters that are prepared and ready to retire before the end of this year? That's going to put us at 19 firefighters. The staffing levels are ridiculous. It was reported, and I watched the same interview that the mayor had done, the dean of Levin College at Cleveland State. It was stated in a comment that was submitted during the program that the mayor is the chair of the Cairo County Mayor's Association on collaboration and his work hard in the area of workplace development. How about developing our workforce in the fire department and adding people? You're gambling with our safety. City council needs to start asking questions and demanding answers, not just going along to get along. You guys are all elected to do a job. Now I'm demanding you do it. Remember, you work for us and not the mayor. You guys got voted in. You sure as hell can be voted out.
Here's the email that was submitted by Mr. Bodett. If you take one, pass it down, please.
Good evening. My name is Richard Singer at 6211 DeLara, a resident of Brooklyn for over 43 years. First of all, I'd like to thank First of all, I'd like to thank councilperson Groddig for the nice graduation gesture, and yes, we have some great graduates this year. Also want to remind the city council that you're more than welcome to attend the graduation. It'll be held Saturday, June 4th, at our stadium at 7:00 PM. That said, in my previous life, I spent 17 years working for the city of Cleveland as a budget management analyst and a financial administrator. During that tenure, I had an opportunity to do staffing assessments, budgets, you name it. So, did some research, and this study, and I'll share this with city council, you'd get more elaboration and clarification. This fifth Fire Service Needs Assessment Survey was conducted by the NFPA beginning in 2020 and concluded in 2021. It follows earlier surveys completed in 2001, 2005, 2010, 2015. The call to survey was to identify the major needs of the U.S. Fire Service by comparing what departments actually have with what existing consensus standards, government regulations, and other nationally-recognized guidance documents state that they need to have to be safe and effective. The survey responses that were received were from 2,969 fire departments of all sizes, including the size of Brooklyn, which goes from a range of 10,000 to 14,000 in that range category. Okay? And again, I'll share this survey with you. The survey was conducted to look at several things: community risk reduction, staffing and operations, health and wellness, facilities and apparatus, wildland and WUI firefighting, which I don't think applies to us, I don't think we have any big forests here, changes across five studies, personal protective equipment, training certification, and executive summary. What caught my eye was, in the study, was staffing levels, because this has been a concern of several of us here, and I hope it's a concern of all city council. The questions that I would ask once you take a look at the survey are, when was the last time any staffing assessments were done by our safety director? And what were the assessments for hires and retires? Mr. Slattery recently just mentioned that there's some retirees. My concern as a citizen and as a school board member is that our children are safe, all of our children are safe, and our seniors are safe, all of our residents are safe, from anything that might jeopardize their safety. Whether it's the calls for emergency service, which I know with most fire departments, that's the rule of the day, that most of the fire department calls are either for accidents here in Brooklyn, or for service calls for ambulatory services, not so much fires. But when a fire does happen, a potential fire, like in my residence, our wonderful fire department came out and saved me from, my wife and myself, from any kind of injury, because the fire department noticed that the surgical service was so dangerous that a fire could have started within minutes, and it disconnected the service for us. This happened many years ago, but I'm very thankful for the fire department for doing that. So, I think, my point is this, my point is that some staffing assessments need to be made. Take a look at the survey, you'll see what other cities, villages are doing. Has our old fire operations and training been updated with new commercial projects? My biggest concern, and this is a concern of the survey as well, is that as we grow in Brooklyn, we're also growing multi-level buildings, whether it's Amazon or another hotel, what we saw at the Hampton. And what concerned me was, I applaud you for having built-in redundancy with mutual assistance. That's a wonderful thing. But my biggest concern as far as staffing goes for Brooklyn is, is it expected? What happens if that mutual assistance doesn't happen? Do we have enough personnel for each ladder truck and pumper? And this is what the survey basically addresses, is you increase proficiency and efficiency if you go from three firefighters per truck to four people. It's amazing what they found as far as the difference in efficiencies. And response time increased substantially. Education. There was something just mentioned about possibly our fire department doing more for educating our citizens. I think Ms. Voidy mentions having the fire department do maybe a community day where we can address, you know, do you have CO2 prevention, you know, or a fire detector? What about the siren? You know, if you hear the siren, we have residents who have no clue. If a siren does go off, what does that mean? So, if we have education, if there's a different sound for each siren, one's for a tornado, maybe, one's for some other catastrophe, you know, we can educate our seniors and those people who don't have access to smartphones and what have you. With that said, I'll send each member of city council a copy of the survey. You know, please look it through. It's some great information. I think it'll enlighten every community member. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to make a public comment? All right, well, I'll move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We will begin this evening. Oh, thank you. Thank you for that. We did not do minutes, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of minutes from our last meeting dated May the 9th. Any comments or questions on those?
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Motion approved.
No, that is a bad idea, though.
I'll second to a per minute, it's not to adjourn.
To approve the minutes, Rob Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Rynchucki.
Yes.
Andy Sollertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddig.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Rynchucki, for that reminder. I appreciate it. All right, the first committee report we have this evening is from Recreation Board. As long as he doesn't want to adjourn, council.
Thank you. Your buddy's eyes lit up on that, too, ready to go. Brooklyn Recreation presents the following free live concerts and movie nights on Wednesday evenings in Veterans Memorial Park on the following dates. June 8th, Movie Night, Scoob. June 22nd, Concert Funkology. July 6th, Concert Hip to That. July 20th, Concert Justman's Band. August 3rd, Movie Night, Jungle Cruise. August 17th, Concert Dan Zola Orchestra. August 31st, Concert Swamps of Jersey. September 14th, Concert Perfect Choice. Movies arrive at 7:30, starts at 8:00 PM, concerts 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Brooklyn Safety Town will be held at Veterans Memorial Park on the following dates. June 27th to July 21st, two sessions. 8:30 AM to 11:00 AM, or noon to 2:30 PM. July 11th through July 15th, two sessions. 8:30 AM to 11:00 AM, or noon to 12:30 PM, 2:30 PM, sorry. July 25th and July 29th, two sessions, noon to 2:30, or 5:00 PM to 7:30. Fees, residents $35, non-residents $45. Registration for residents begin on May 16th, non-residents begin on June 6th. The next rec. board meetings, looks like it'll be in September. Meetings are canceled for June, July, and August. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is the Planning Commission, Councilman Groddig.
Thank you. Planning Commission will meet on Wednesday, June 1st, at 6:00 PM, and we have one item on our agenda. It is for a sign, one pole sign, and one internally illuminated sign for Ohio Cat at 9500 Brook Park Road. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. The committee, the whole, met this evening at 6:15, as we do before all regularly scheduled council meetings, to discuss the following. First, we had a report from Bowen. They were here to discuss the AV system that'll be put in the new council chambers, and they explained kind of the technology, they'll be going into that and answer any questions for that. It was very informative. Then we discussed the following legislation. Resolution 2022-19, we hope to pass by suspension of rules. This extends the moratorium in the city of Brooklyn in order to construct a storage unit for up to 180 days. This is a continuation of the, I think this will be the fourth time that we've extended this, and again, this is to go in with our zoning update, that we want to put a moratorium or create a moratorium on these until our zoning update is completed. And that goes with Resolution 2022-20 as well, and that deals with the construction of billboards placing a moratorium on those. We also discussed our Resolution 2022-22, which creates the opioid sentiment advisory task force for the funds that will eventually proceeds from a lawsuit that's currently pending. We're not exactly sure when those funds will be distributed, when they are. This task force would provide guidance on how best to use those funds. Then, the committee recommended that, excuse me, posted on first reading, Resolution 2022-23, this adopts the tax budget for the fiscal year 2023. Then Resolution 2022-24 is on first reading, we hope to pass by suspension of rules. This is in opposition to a House bill, it's House Bill 563, that's currently being considered in the House of Representatives here in the state of Ohio. And this would propose the limit that local municipalities like Brooklyn can place on short-term rental properties. Several months ago, we had a rather lengthy discussion about how to regulate short-term rentals, Airbnbs, Verbo's, things like that, and we came to a compromise ordinance on that. If this legislation goes through, it basically makes the city of Brooklyn's legislation null and void. It's a home rule issue, and the council did recommend unanimously to oppose House Bill 563. Then we discuss ordinance 2022-15. This authorizes the capital improvement plan for 2022. Two changes, one was a $6,000 increase for vehicles for the service department. This primarily was an increase in one of the trucks that we were purchasing for that department. And then lastly, was a $60,000 increase in the streets program for two different projects that came in a little bit over what was originally budgeted for. And then lastly, we had a discussion on ordinance 2022-11, reaffirm the prohibition of the possession, discharge, ignition of fireworks. We, at the last meeting, tabled this ordinance for further discussion. A compromise ordinance has been placed and will be voting when we get to legislation to replace this current ordinance. And just to kind of go over the basics of it, it would allow fireworks with a permit. The permit would last for five years. For a discharge of fireworks, those that would be discharging it would be required to have some safety equipment there, including a fire extinguisher and also a first aid equipment. Also, the hours would be limited from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and the ordinance would allow fireworks on the Fourth of July holiday. And that is all that we discussed in Committee the Whole. Again, that takes place at 6:15, prior to the start of all council, regularly scheduled council meetings. Well, that will move on to our school board liaison, Councilman Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. The school board met on May 17th at 5:00 PM. They met earlier because it was senior awards night. I was not able to attend due to the time change. However, I do have the information from the meeting. It was a lengthy agenda, so I am just going to summarize, and it is available on the schools' board docs if anyone wants more detail. They approved their minutes and financial statements. They commended the students for the academic and athletic honors, which included the National Honor Society, the Junior Honor Society, the National Art Honor Society, the Junior Art Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, and Technical Honor Society. They also entered into various contracts for support for the upcoming school year, the 2022-23 school year. They approved the cafeteria prices and student fees for the upcoming school year. They approved the graduates, who will be graduating in a couple weeks. And they also approved the supplemental assignments, and also employees who are approved for extended time to do certain duties in the summer, for example, summer tutors and cleaners, things like that. And, let's see, they approved the classified and certified staff for next year. They approved an unpaid leave for a bus monitor. They entered into an agreement for the accident insurance for students. And they approved a resolution to recognize and show their appreciation to the students at the Polaris Career Center Construction Trades Program for their contribution to the new pavilion. I've mentioned at previous meetings that we actually have the Polaris students building the pavilion at the stadium. And they also approved putting on the ballot this November, a renewal of an existing levy that expires in 2023. Their next meeting after that was actually earlier today, and I believe it was for executive session regarding collective bargaining. And then the next meeting is June 7th, 6:00 PM in the treasurer's office, and that is a work session. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is legislative update, Councilman Borowski.
Thank you. Good evening, Brooklyn residents here in person, and those that will be watching the recording later. My update for this evening will pertain to House Bill 37. House Bill 37 allows patients to receive up to three emergency refills of lifesaving medication in a calendar year without a prescription. The bill expands on a 2016 law previously allowing only one emergency refill. The bill allows pharmacists to dispense lifesaving emergency medication, such as insulin, three times a year with the patient's insurance, covering the refill as if it were part of the benefit plan. The emergency refills must not be consecutive and are for a limited supply. The first refill is for 30 days. The second and third, if used in the same calendar year, are for up to a seven-day supply. It becomes a fact of his law, June 1st, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Borowski. We'll now have reports of council begin this evening with Councilman Ryan Chucky.
Thank you. You can order a second round of eight free COVID tests delivered straight to your home. While we've moved on to the next phase of this endemic, COVID is still real and is still around us. So, don't wait until you have symptoms or have been exposed. You can order your tests at USPS.com/COVIDtests. I look forward to going out again with Mrs. McNulty's special education class tomorrow to clean up Markord Park. Her class also is having a car wash on May 31st from 9:00 AM until noon in the high school parking lot. So, if you're able, please come out there. They're collecting donations that go towards programming and curriculum materials for the next school year. So, please support them if you're able to and around, I know it is a weekday. We did have our first regularly scheduled community cleanup yesterday. We only had about five volunteers, but I'll take part of the blame. I was late to getting the notices out, so you'll start to see those on the Facebook page, and we have sign-ups on a couple of other volunteer organization websites as well now. The next cleanup is Sunday, June 5th, at Memorial Park, from 9:00 till 11:00. We have all supplies on hand. All you have to do is wear comfortable and weather-appropriate shoes and clothes, and bring some water, especially if it's warm, but we'll have everything else. And to answer your question, Mr. Slattery, while it was a safety and environmental committee that was requested by Ms. Pucci, it has been turned over to the finance committee as it's a budget issue regarding staffing levels. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sollertz.
Thank you. Tomorrow's fresh fruit and produce giveaway at St. Elias starts at 3:30, so please don't get there any earlier than 3:00 or whatever. Sometimes we have people showing up at 1:30. Just got a long wait. As Meg mentioned, Keep Brooklyn Beautiful, you can go and look through volunteer.kab.org. You'll see the dates and locations, where we have cleanups going on. Heritage Christian School is doing a community service day this Thursday. We'll have about 50 to 70 students. We've got one or two projects in hand, we still got the details worked out. So, that's another good thing happening in the city. With the Brooklyn City Schools, there are about 250 students. They're going to be in groups of 20 to 25, working in a various number of locations. They're going to be at the Brooklyn Point, the Brooklyn Historical Society, that we're working helping residents into acres. working, helping residents into acres, some streets nearby to acres. You'll see people all over town working, doing some good for this community. So it's thank you to everybody involved in that. And one final thank you, thank you to all the veterans that served, and to those residents and family of residents currently serving your country. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. First, I'd like to thank manager Kathy Sullivan for coming and being with us this evening and sharing all that good information. We appreciate it. Congratulations to Kitty Park. You know, as a child, going to Kitty Park was always very exciting. My favorite ride was always the Little Dipper, and I have such great memories, but I have even better memories of taking my kids to Kitty Park. And the mayor's right that when you say you're from Brooklyn, very frequently, that is one of the responses you get, that, oh, that's where Kitty Park is. And I'd also like to thank them not only for being here in our community, but the mayor mentioned, they are really good corporate citizens. They donate, they participate, they're active in our chamber. So we really appreciate them. I'd like to thank my colleagues for supporting resolution twenty-two-two dash twenty-four, which opposes House Bill two-sixty-three. This relates to short-term rentals, and residents will recall that we did establish regulations for the short-term rentals, which are the Airbnbs and the Verbos. And I think we came up with really good, moderate legislation that doesn't overstep. We were very cautious. We didn't want to invite any type of potential litigation. And the short-term rentals, if they're not regulated, they really impact negatively the people who live in that neighborhood. So I realize that with the political climate, it's probably a losing battle that this is probably going to pass at the state level, but I did feel that it was important, going on the record, that we do oppose, basically, the state wants to usurp the city's home rule authority, which is granted under the constitution of the state of Ohio, and they, once again, want to say that we can't pass our own regulations for what's going on in our community. Regarding the question, I guess about the safety committee meeting, I did ask for a safety committee meeting regarding staffing in the fire department at the last council meeting. We were on track to have it, then it was bumped to finance. And while I recognize that clearly hiring more firefighters is, will also definitely impact the finances, I still believe that staffing in the fire department is a safety issue. So I would suggest for efficiency and to ensure that this is addressed correctly, that we have a joint safety committee and finance committee when we do get that scheduled. And regarding the quotes, I don't know all the details about the public record request, but I think there was a quote that we just got, not I think, we did get a quote recently from the mayor, which was just this past Thursday, so that might have been a timing issue. And I believe we also got an earlier quote. It was either shortly, like either right at the safety committee meeting, or right afterwards, and I believe that's what Chief Milky was referencing, that it was about fifty thousand dollars. So I think there were two different things with the fifty thousand dollars, one from a long time ago, which I, I don't know, you know, when that was secured, but then a more recent one. So hopefully, we can get that straightened out. On a sad note, I learned just before the meeting that Bill Dennehan passed away. He did live in Brooklyn a very long time ago. In fact, he was Mary Jo's neighbor, and that's how Mary Jo and I met as kids. He's probably one of the most distinguished people in public service. If you get a chance, just Google William Dennehan. Not only did he serve in various public service capacities throughout the state of Ohio and locally, not in Brooklyn, but in northeast Ohio, but he was always brought in to correct issues and basically be a change agent. He's been given a lot of honors until recently, not a lot of people knew he was also an artist. And there was an exhibit scheduled last week of his artwork down at CSU, and it's the art of a change agent. Unfortunately, it was postponed, and it has been rescheduled for this Thursday. I guess I'm grateful, I mentioned at the last council meeting, that we finally had our in-person graduation from CSU for the Certified Public Manager Program, and I'm very grateful that he was there that evening that I was able to see him. Congratulations to all our graduates. We're all very proud of you, and we wish you all the best in the next chapter of your life. Finally, I'd like to wish everyone a happy and safe Memorial Day, and please make sure you take some time to remember the purpose of the day, to think about the people who made the ultimate sacrifice for us, and so we can enjoy the freedoms that we do. That completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borowski.
Thank you. I'd like to start off by saying congratulations to the Memphis Kitty Park as well. For seventy years, they've been a part of this community, building fond memories for a lot of us. And especially, as everyone knows, I've got a very young son, and I'll be looking to take Leo to the park for years to come and build those memories as well. Yesterday was my first opportunity to help with the cleanup with Ms. Shaki, my father-in-law, and a few others. It was fun. The rain held off, and I think hopefully it was very productive. As we're in the middle of May, heading towards Memorial Day, May is National Military Appreciation Month. With having two brothers that served and my late father as well, it goes without saying thank you to all of our military forces, especially those living in and from Brooklyn. Speaking of that, subject of the military, I had reached out to the mayor and Mr. Verba a few weeks back, and me and Verba have been, you know, talking about it. We're looking to put up the veterans-only parking sign again, and we're looking to do that hopefully by Memorial Day at the senior center. Once again, tomorrow at St. Elias, we will be doing the produce distribution on Memphis. This is a wonderful opportunity to volunteer and give back. If you're looking to volunteer, please call Father George at two-one-six, six-six-one, one-one-five-five, or just come out and help tomorrow. Make sure you wear good shoes and you have a good attitude. For me, if council's in favor of it, a joint session, I don't think would be that bad of an idea to talk about the firefighter staffing. When it comes to the sirens, with the research I've done, with everything we've heard, and even watching news footage from around the country, even maintained, these things malfunction and don't regularly work. They're expensive to keep up, and they're expensive to even put in. And I had brought up to Chief Milky, as he brought up, unfortunately, he's not here tonight, that some of the chiefs he had spoke to had spoke about personal weather radios. That's something that I'm still interested in looking at, to find out a quote on that. If the siren is still up for discussion, that's something that we can definitely look at quotes. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. I've got a couple things. Number one, House Bill five-sixty-three. When I'm reading this, I can't believe it. Residents in this city better get ready for this. Back to this short-term rentals, that I tried to ban it from this city. We have problems with rentals, and now we're going to put short-term rentals next to every one of us, and it could happen. People moving in and out of your house, three days, seven days, weekly. When this was going on, I had many elderly people calling me and said, they're in the middle of the night, hanging around the cars, going in and out of the house, garbage cans not coming in. House Bill sixty-five-sixty-three, this is insane. This is actually insane. And the reason is, they're taking power away from our city government here. That's completely wrong. We passed legislation that I wasn't totally agreeing because I wanted it banned. We passed legislation here to try to regulate so the nonsense don't go on in this city, and it's going to go on if this passes. I don't know where these state reps are coming from, or what they're trying to do to take our power away up here. But they're going to hear it from residents, and I think they're going to hear it north and just from Brooklyn when this starts, when this starts to move in, because to put this type of business in the city of Brooklyn, in the residential areas, is totally wrong. And I'm going to go on record, I'm against these state reps, I'm against taking power away from this council, because I know what's going to happen to this city when you put short-term rentals in here. As far as the sirens, I back these sirens. I believe in the sirens. If this federal field services can come with a quote low enough, and I'm not taking sides with anybody, I'm not playing political games with it, but if these sirens can be fixed at a decent cost, I believe it should be done. Now, when it comes to these phones with code red, whatever kind of code we come up, we try to get it in these phones, there's other things that come up to these phones that tell you if tornado is coming or an emergency. If that phone goes out, if that phone dies, if the power goes out, the elderly people here are not going to be notified, period. Some of them do have those flip phones, I get it. And that's what I'm worried about. The older people are not, some of them are not up on the step technology, some of them don't even have computers. When I knocked on doors in campaigns, some of them don't even have computers. I don't even know what kind of technology they have in their phones, or even if they have, or what kind of phone they do have. So when it comes to that, I think council should think about the sirens, and again, get that estimate. Firefighters, we were supposed to have a meeting, it did not happen. It was canceled. So I'm not going to say too much on this until the chief is present, because I'll have questions to the chief. But I want a meeting, and I'm sure we're going to have one, we're going to have one in the near future. And those questions will be asked, and we'll go from there. That concludes my report.
Thank you. This is Groth.
Thank you. Along with graduations in school districts, May also brings retirements. We have three Brooklyn residents who will be retiring from the Brooklyn City Schools, and I'd just like to say their names and acknowledge the important jobs that they had with our schools. First is Linda Kolitzka. She has worked for Brooklyn City Schools for thirty years, mainly in our food service. Next is Janice Cryowski. Her name is synonymous with our athletic department. She worked for Brooklyn for thirty-four years. Whether we had an athletic director or didn't have an athletic director or a part-time one, she has been a study in the athletic department for thirty-four years. And the third one is Linda Etheridge. The Etheridge family is very active in our city, and Linda has held a few different jobs in Brooklyn City Schools. Her job that she currently is holding is the attendance secretary. So all three will be retiring. Most of their dates are June thirtieth, so I wish all three of them well in whatever they're choosing to move on to next. I also would like to thank Kathy Sullivan for coming today. I truly believe that the heart of any town, any city, any village can be the library. It is an invaluable resource, and we are so fortunate to have an award-winning library like the Cuyahoga County Public Libraries in our midst. And I answered the survey, and I look forward to every step of planning along the way. And thank you for reaching out to the residents and being so open to what we think will help make our branch the best branch. Ms. Whitey, I, first, I'm going to apologize, I did not mean to assume that all residents have access to everything. I'm well aware, working in our school district, of the financial constraints. I would have to say, though, as someone who's not too far, I feel I have one step moving towards the senior status faster than I care to. I, and I am beginning to take a little bit of offense at everyone thinking that because seniors are senior, that they are not necessarily with it, with technology. When both of my feet are in that, I will definitely take offense at that, because I do think we don't give our senior citizens enough credit often. I am not opposed to sirens. I am open to listening to all suggestions and trying to find what will fit best in Brooklyn. If it is sirens, the price isn't going to stop, whether it's five hundred, or five thousand, or fifty thousand. That, that isn't the problem. I want to make sure that we're doing what's best for the residents, and I am relying on our safety forces, our two chiefs, in guiding me with that. Mr. Slattery, while others were talking, I looked, my email for a quote was from May nineteenth. So I have an actual quote that was provided to us on May nineteenth, and I think that is Thursday. I didn't actually look at the day. So yes, I do have a quote, and it is significantly higher than fifty thousand dollars. It's, they're not the easiest things for me to read and understand, but I can see the bold bottom line, and it's more than fifty thousand dollars. So I have received it. Mr. Singer, thank you for bringing the information, a little hidden, hidden expertise that I didn't realize after watching you for so many years in our, in our schools, in our school district, little expertise that I look forward to having this survey sent to us. Thank you. Wishing everyone a safe Memorial Weekend, and especially, like Ms. Pucci said, please save some time in your weekend to think about and honor those who gave their lives for us, their families. Their families are always close in my thoughts also. And also for our active military, that they may continue to be safe, especially in some of these turbulent times. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Groth. Just a couple things. I know we talked a lot about Kitty Park tonight, but it is open, even during the construction. I know it looks like that road is closed over there, the bridge is closed, but they've tried to maneuver things so you can get into Kitty Park. It's not going to be the most convenient, it's kind of a bummer, that with this being their seventieth year, but they are open, and so you will be able to get into there. I know they, I believe they've posted signs at two different locations, but they are open, even though it looks like that whole area is closed. In regards to the public safety meeting that has become a finance committee meeting, that meeting actually was scheduled for tonight at five-thirty, was actually, there was actually a posting that went out at five-thirty. However, we received, the administration received a rather lengthy list of questions from one of the members of the committee, and due to the short timeframe, to get those questions answered, there was just no way those questions were going to be able to answer in a timely manner before tonight's meeting. And so we did not cancel the meeting, this particular meeting, but it has been postponed. And so yes, we will have that meeting once the administration is able to get the answers to those questions. And they're all valid questions, they were just very lengthy, and were going to take some time to put together, so, and that was just not going to happen in the short amount of time that the administration was given. In regards to House Bill, is it five-sixty-three? Is that the right, is that the right number? Yeah, I, I'm a huge proponent of home rule, I've talked about that from numerous times up here. And about home rule, it's very, very important that the local city council and the communities are able to govern themselves. That was the whole purpose of home rule, and unfortunately, over the last many years, the state has chipped away at that. It's not right, it's not beneficial to the community, and so I very much am opposed to what they're doing. It doesn't, it doesn't even matter what's inside the legislation. When it comes to violating the home rule, it should be left to the local communities, and I've made that abundantly clear numerous times. So thank you, Mrs. Pucci, for pointing this out here. I don't know how effective it'll be, but at least we're taking a stand saying that we're against home rule. In regards to the quote for the siren, Mrs. Groth already answered the question, but council was sent that quote on May the nineteenth. In regards to Memorial Day, that will take place this coming Monday, and thankfully, the mayor's going to talk about this in a second, but the parade is back on again after taking, I think it's a two-year hiatus due to COVID. after taking, I think it was a two-year hiatus due to COVID. And so it'd be great to get the community back together once again to celebrate, remember, celebrate the lives of those that have given their lives, and of course, remember them and their sacrifice that they've been given. So if you have some time on Memorial Day next Monday, that you'll take some time to come out to the parade and to remember those that gave their lives for it. Right, that's all I have for tonight, so with this time, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Venker. So I spoke about this at committee of a whole, but I do have a pre-construction meeting on Ridge Road tomorrow. This is set to start construction in June, I can't say this enough. This construction's from flowerdale to pearl. This is definitely going to make traffic worse on Ridge Road. And I will probably say this up until construction starts, just to remind people, because it is going to be difficult, and hopefully in the long term, this will be really good for our city. They have changed the plans, and I think this goes into the price change, is our engineer really advocated for a more in-depth construction so we wouldn't have to go back and do construction more often. Because it is such a difficult space to get into with the highway, with the three borders. So we want that construction to last longer, so that counts for the price difference, I believe. I want to give a shout out to Bob Kapler in the Service Department. I finally got my act together and signed up for the hometown banners this year. And I think he just does a tremendous job with that. I also want to shout out to Barb Stanton, who's retired. She used to be the Building Department Secretary and the Service Director's Secretary. She's the one who started this program. And so I just think that Bob Kapler did an amazing job with these banners, he does every gear. So I finally have my two grandfathers, Thomas Coyne and John Gallagher, up on Ridge Road. And then my uncle, Timmy Coyne, who's a former firefighter here. And it's just so nice to see my family members that have served in the military shown that lived here their entire life. And again, Bob Kapler does an amazing job, so shout out to him. I mentioned this also in committee, we did receive survey results. We will be getting those on the website. I wanted the administration and city council to take a review to see if they had any questions for the survey company first. Thirdly, Brooklyn is in the first phase. Cuyahoga County is allocating a bunch of ARPA money for broadband expansion. Brooklyn is in that first phase of that broadband expansion. And so the administration has been asked to sit down with the county, as well as PC for People, is the vendor that they are passing tomorrow night, hopefully. We're looking at that internet option, not only for those who can't afford it, but it's for everything. It's $15 a month, so that is such an affordable rate. For a lot of people, it's not just about reliable internet, it's about affordable internet, too. So to offer that to our citizens, and really to be first on the list, I think is amazing. It's a great thing for Brooklyn. And even for those who may not be able to afford $15 a month, there are some subsidies to cover those costs. So as soon as we launch this program, we'll get this information out. I think it's a wonderful thing for our community. Brooklyn is about 20% of the residents do not have broadband internet. So the access here is vitally important. And Sue said, especially when we saw with children during the pandemic, and they got pushed to online schooling, and to make sure they were giving that Wi-Fi connectors, and just make sure that we can live in today's society if something like that were to happen again, and seamless, and work from home. Sirens have been brought up again. I put my position on this, I said to city council, you know, we know what the expenditure is. If they want this, we'll change appropriations, this will be their lead. And I'll support whatever they wish to do. I just want to correct the record on a few things, though. There was an insinuation that there is a lie, which I find baffling, because I think you're on like 75 requests so far, Mr. Slattery, for the year, and we provide everything. We are full faith believing in providing public records requests to anyone who asks it. And so, you know, I think Kevin Potler deserves probably a raise for, because he takes the lead on all that, and he needs to redact following the law. We probably should hire someone full-time just to do public records requests at this rate. But we answer public records requests in a timely fashion, we put information out. And so I don't know why you would insinuate anyone is lying. And I want to correct the record, there have been two quotes sent off to city council. In your request, you talked about a quote that has been discussed at city council. Our safety meeting, I just looked, was May 2nd. The quote that Chief Milkie was talking about was, he said 2015 or 16? He couldn't remember, he was going from memory. I checked with him, could you find that old quote? And our email system does not catalog that back. I mean, they'll archive certain information, but at some point, you have to delete emails because it bogs down our servers. So he did not have that quote. But council has been sent two quotes. I believe one was like the Thursday after, because they asked us to gather quotes. One was what you guys were saying. I believe one was around $55,000, and it didn't include all of the numbers. And then the second quote was about $150-some thousand. But that's because the company that came and did an assessment said that we need four tornado sirens to be effective, and we only have two tornado sirens. So that's another question out there. There's been some insinuation that we, that me, I guess personally, have some kind of racist behavior towards Mr. McMahon's tenant from his case that he lost against Brooklyn. He referred to his colored tenant. His colored tenant is Hispanic. And I find it sort of funny, because within the year, I've been made fun of abusing my personal money to donate to the Hispanic Society, yet in the same vein, I'm racist against Hispanics. So I'm kind of fed up with this by this point. And if you knew anything about application process, do you know we have a civil service commission? We don't ask what race you are when you apply for an application here. That's everywhere. And if you understand, going through government, that's just not how it works. And I would implore the civil service commission that goes through the process, the tedious process to get hired here. And I know people make fun of this, it's a joke, that this is not how it always worked in Brooklyn, that it is so tedious for directors to hire people. But I follow the law. And this is one of the reasons that we decided to exit the school board, because we couldn't get the school to follow the law. So the civil service commission didn't want to hold that over the head and say, hey, you know, we have this process, we follow civil service laws, this is what, we follow matrix, we score people, that's how we hire people. We don't look at age, we don't look at the color of your skin, it's irrelevant. So to say that this administration, this city council, any of the directors, these employees are racist in any capacity is unfair and unnecessary. And the image that looks like in a city is disastrous. And I don't think anyone up here should be standing for that. Second, in my last couple of things, I want to welcome a new police officer that I'll be swearing in next week. His name is Morley Bryanstall. It's a difficult last name, so I'm sorry, Morley, if I butchered it. But Morley, this is, this is the second time he's applied through the police force. And this time, he made it, he was one of our top contenders. He did a terrific job through the process, so we'll be welcoming Morley next week. And he's a very nice kid, and I welcome him to our department. And then lastly, Ron mentioned Memorial Day. We kicked that off at the Brooklyn High School at 11:00 AM. Our ceremony is here in Memorial Park at noon. And this year, our featured pastor is Carl Etheridge. And again, Sue mentioned Etheridge is such a great part of our community. And I know they'll be leaving our city for a new job this year, and we'll be missing them. But I'm really glad we get to kind of cap it off with Carl being our pastor this year at Memorial Day. As well as our main speaker will be one of our police officers, our very own Chris Frye, who's, the Frye family's been a longtime part of this community, but he's also a veteran. One of the things at Memorial Day I really love, and I saw this with Mr. Hogan before he passed, is when you're having a veteran go up there and speak, and I know you're always at a memorial day. When you have a veteran go and speak and talk about their personal experiences and how it's impacted them, and it's how, that collective mentality for people who've served in the military and really understanding. I think it means more than coming from a speech from the mayor. So I just want to say in advance, thank you to Chris Frye for accepting the speech this year at Memorial Day. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two directory reports this evening, we have our finance director, Mr. Regus.
Good evening. Just two updates for me tonight. The first update is the financial report for the general fund through April of 2022. So some of the key takeaways on the revenue side. Overall revenues are 35% of the estimated amount, and also 18% less than prior year due to a substantial decrease in income taxes of $1.28 million. The decrease is mostly a result of less revenue received as far as non-recurring one-time revenue. If you recall, we received a substantial amount of non-recurring one-time revenue last year. We are not seeing that amount come in this year. On the commitment side, overall, the commitments are 45% of the budget amount, and 5% less as compared to last year. Overall, on the general fund, the pending unencumbered fund balance decreased by about $1.1 million to $15.2 million. Income tax for this current month of May 2022, we received our distributions from RITA. Total distributions are $1.66 million, $322,000 less than last year. If you exclude any one-time or non-recurring revenue, May of 2022 is $109,000 more than last year. Most of that, or all of that, is a result of increase in net profit at individual taxes of about $126,000. On the individual taxes, while we don't look at that much, as we only get about 4% or 5% of our income tax revenue from individual taxes, there was a timing difference as far as the income tax filing season is concerned. So this year, it was on April 18th, last year was on May 17th. So there's a timing difference there, and I expect that to equalize in the upcoming distributions, and that'll net itself out. That concludes my report for the general fund financial statement for April. I also want to mention that our city council budget work sessions have been scheduled for this year. So there's three dates, as always. The first date is October 17th, where we'll discuss the capital budget. The second date is November 7th, where we'll be discussing general operations. And then there's a placeholder on November 21st, in case there's any pending items from the prior meetings. We'll talk about that at the third meeting. We have not needed those in my time here, but we have that as a placeholder, just in case. So all of those meetings are at 6:00 PM at the Senior Center. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Regus. Our law director, Mr. Brotter.
May I be recognized, I have a question. Thank you. Do we have any updates from RITA regarding the refunds from 2021 relating to work at home? I realize that we'll probably get a final reconciliation in June.
Right. So none other than what we discussed about a month or so ago. They did say that they'll have more of an accurate, updated, almost finalized estimate in June. They have not been in communication with me since then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brotter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm loath to address any allegation made from the floor with respect to a particular employee of the city. And so I won't mention that employee by name, but we do have an employee, and I'm speaking to you, council members, so that you're aware. We do have an employee who was terminated. He was a supervisor last decade, was terminated for making racially insensitive and offensive remarks. The union that represents him took his termination through the grievance process to a neutral arbitrator. And the arbitrator ruled that the discipline was just, but the termination itself was not, and ordered that the employee be reinstated when a new non-supervisory position opened up in the service unit in which this particular employee worked. That arbitration award was issued prior to the beginning of this administration's term. And the last administration dutifully took that arbitration award on appeal up to Common Police Court. Common Police Court upheld the arbitrator's award, and that was the conclusion of the case. The city was therefore obligated, whichever administration took office, to reinstate this particular employee when a new service position opened up, full-time service position opened up in the service garage. It took some years for that to happen. But when that did happen, this administration followed the law and rehired that employee into that lowest-level service position. That employee remains our employee today. I do not want to permit you to be concerned for the rest of this evening, or ever, that the administration supports racially insensitive or offensive remarks. And in fact, we've had discipline since then with respect to that kind of behavior that has been sustained. Thanks.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Brotter, appreciate that. Now that we've all had legislation for this evening, the first two items are on second reading, but hope to pass by suspension of the rules. The first is Resolution 2022-19, extending a moratorium imposed by Resolution 2020-10, 2021-13, and 2021-37 on the granting of building permits for any building, structure, use, or change of use that would enable the construction of storage units or self-service storage facilities for a period not to exceed 180 days from the effective date of this resolution and declaring emergency. Any comments or questions?
Introduced by all to suspend the rules.
Second. To suspend the rules, Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brodick?
Yes.
To adopt, Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brodick?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-20, extending a moratorium imposed by Resolution 2020-13, 2021-14, and 2021-40 on the granting of building permits for any building, structure, use, or change of use that would enable the construction of billboards for a period not to exceed 180 days from the effective date of this resolution and declaring emergency. Any comments or questions?
Introduced by all to suspend the rules. Second. To suspend the rules, Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brodick?
Yes.
To adopt, Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brodick?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-22 is on second reading, creating the opioid settlement advisory task force to provide guidance on appropriate uses of settlement proceeds from the national opioid litigation. Next is ordinance 2022-11. This is reaffirming the prohibition of the possession, discharge, ignition, or explosion of fireworks in the city of Brooklyn as set forth in Chapter 1519 of the Brooklyn Codified Ordances. Notwithstanding the provisions of House Bill 172 as signed into law, this ordinance is currently tabled, so I make a motion that we untable it.
Second. Teremo from the table, Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brodick?
Yes.
I move that we use the substitution for this resolution.
And let me read into the record one more time what the substitutes will be. I did the report, just to make sure. So this will permit fireworks on the July 4th holiday, from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. You must obtain a permit that is good for five years in order to do this. And you also have safety equipment there on site, which is a fire extinguisher and a first aid kit.
Ron, let the residents know, it's only July 4th.
July 4th, yes. And I will second.
To adopt, the substitute ordinance, Ron Van? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just to substitute, because we'll have to suspend the rules if we pass tonight, otherwise it's on second reading.
Oh, this is just to accept the substitute ordinance. Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brodick?
Yes.
Before we make that recommendation, does anyone else on council want to have further discussion regarding this? If so, I can make a motion to put it on second reading. Mr. Brotter, do you have something?
Nothing. I just want to let you know, Mr. Chair, that in the course of tonight's meeting, between the committee of the whole meeting and now, this substitute version has been placed on board dogs.
Thank you, sir.
That's on the fireworks, correct?
Yes.
Sorry, ma'am. The only thing I got to say on it is that let the residents know that it can be changed in the future to add more days if this goes the way it's supposed to go, with the permits, number one, with the hours of operation, number two. So I'm hoping that they abide by no fireworks going all night long, number one, in getting permits.
Back from us.
In getting permits, as per.
Thank you. Introduced by all to suspend the rules.
Second. To suspend the rules, Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Brodick.
Yes.
To adopt, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Brodick.
Yes.
To adopt, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Brodick.
Yes.
To adopt, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Brodick.
Yes.
To adopt, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Brodick.
Yes.
To adopt, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Brodick.